The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Conway, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Kennedy. Twenty-four present.
A quorum being present. We will be led today in prayer by Reverend Tommy Pearson of Greater St. Mark Family Church. Reverend Pearson is also a state representative. And when the city was trying to get local control of the police department, I just want to let you know that Reverend Pearson up at Capitol worked hard for us to get local control of the police department even though it was not his fight. He has been an avid supporter of the city of St. Louis. So let's welcome Reverend Pearson to the mic for the opening prayer.
Thank you, thank you so much. By way of a prayer, the prayer today is to ask God to invoke its presence with us today, direct our minds as we do our best for the common good of the people that we represent. I want to thank President Reed for allowing me to come. I want to thank you, the board, for accepting me this morning. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this great opportunity to come and to say a prayer in this great body that you've allowed me to stand before today. We pray for your blessings upon the president and each and all the person, that you bless them with strong mind, good health, and give them great peace of mind as we deliberate the business of the people. Lord, we can't do it without you. But we know you require that we do justly, love mercy, and walk humbly before you. That is my prayer for this body today. We also pray for the success of everyone here today, but most especially our newest member, Lisa Middlebrook. We pray, Lord, that she would be accepted among this body and that she's allowed to be the best she can be for the people who sent her here. Now, Lord, we thank you for the day. Bless us throughout this day. Keep us in your care. It is in the name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I'd like to invite up to the dais our registered Dion Flowers and Alderwoman Elect Middlebrook for the swearing in. Yes, and fiancee, anybody you would like to stand up here with you, bring them with you? I know your father comes. He's proud, proud. Let's give them a big round of applause as they approach the Brother Jesse Todd is here too.
Repeat after me. Please raise your right hand. I, Lisa Middlebrook.
I, Lisa Middlebrook.
Of the city of St. Louis.
Of the city of St. Louis.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
Have been elected by.
Have been elected by.
Qualified voters of the city of St. Louis.
Qualified voters of the city of St. Louis.
To the position of member.
To the position of member.
Of the Board of Aldermen.
Of the Board of Aldermen.
From the Second Ward.
From the Second Ward.
And of the city of St. Louis.
And of the city of St. Louis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I have all of the qualifications.
That I have all the qualifications.
And I am not subject to.
And I am not subject to.
Any of the disqualifications.
Any of the disqualifications.
Name the charter.
Name the charter.
For the office or employment.
For the office or employment.
I'm about to assume.
I'm about to assume.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city.
Of the city.
That I will not be influenced.
That I will not be influenced.
Only by the consideration of fitness.
Only by the consideration of fitness.
In the appointment.
In the appointment.
Promotion.
Promotion.
Demotion.
Demotion.
Suspension.
Suspension.
Or discharge of officers.
Or discharge of officers.
Or employees.
Or employees.
That I will not expend.
That I will not expend.
Nor authorize.
Nor authorize.
The expenditure of money.
The expenditure of money.
Otherwise then for.
Otherwise then for.
The adequate consideration.
The adequate consideration.
An efficient service.
An efficient service.
To the city.
To the city.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Or employment.
Or employment.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Pete.
Our majority floor leader, can our majority floor leader approach the dais for the presentation of the pen? Alderman from the eighteenth. Now, that's rare that you catch Alderman from the eighteenth.
Mr. President, members of the board, I am in fact the floor majority leader. It is in my role as a floor majority leader, my honor to present to the newly elected alderperson the pen for the St. Louis Board of Aldermen. Now, some of us says that's a mark for the rest of your life. But we recognize it as an, as an honor and as an indication of your commitment and your dedication to this city. And so, I don't know if we can get this on you. Let me see here now. We welcome you to the St. Louis Board of Aldermen.
Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderwoman of the Second Ward, you can now officially be seated at the board. So please, please be seated. We're going to give the Alderwoman Elect a minute to make it to her seat, and then we're going to resume the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Kotar, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderwoman Martin, Alderman Honowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed.
Here.
Twenty-six present.
We dispense with line item five, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the second, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I would like to have as my honored guest today, the committeeman of the Second Ward and my father, Larry Middlebrook. I also have as my special guest, Ms. Tanya Williams, Mr. David Robinson, Reverend Tommy Pearson, Mr. Taft Prince, Mr. Glenn Parry, Mr. Bob Hilgeman, President of the St. Louis City Democratic Central Committee, Reverend Everett Ballot, Mr. Cummings White, Mr. Bill Kulik Keeling, Mr. Paul Simon Cosby, Mr. Jesse Todd, Treasurer of the St. Louis City Democratic Central Committee, Mr. Mike Butler, State Rep. I also want to recognize former Alderwoman of the Second Ward, our current city registrar, Dion Flowers. I want to personally thank you for your eighteen years of service on behalf of the Second Ward constituents. And I want to thank you, and I want to thank the residents of the Second Ward for electing me as their new Alderwoman. And I look forward to working for them and working with you, fellow Aldermen and women here at the Board of Aldermen. It's an honor and thank you.
Can I ask all of her guests to please stand? Let us all give you a big round of applause and thank you for Thank you so much for all the work that you've done to get Ms. Middlebrook here today. And, you know, politics is a labor of love, and sometimes it doesn't seem rewarding, but you have to look at it across this entire lifespan, and it is rewarding. And I am very happy that we have another good Alderman at the Board of Aldermen to really work with us, to thoughtfully deliberate on these things that we're faced with each and every day. Any further introductions? Any further Alderwoman from the fourteenth?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local Seventy-Three and Clinton McBride from the Laborers Union.
Alderwoman from the twenty-eighth.
I would like to introduce today as my honored guest, the entire fourth grade class of New City School who joins us this morning up in the gallery. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
I'd like to welcome my honored guest, Fred Cersei, Director of Minority Training, Jeff Hoard of Carpenter's Regional Council, Eric Strauthner of Director of Development and Park, and Shannon Weber, Director of Special Projects.
Alderman from the twenty-third. Yes, I'd like to recognize our collector, Greg Daly, who's hanging out back here in the corner, is my special guest. Alderman from the twenty-first.
We have with us our traffic commissioner, Ms. Deanna Venker, and her daughter, Ms. Delaney Venker, little DV as well.
Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I also would like to honor as my special guest too, Delaney Venker, Sixteenth Ward resident, and her mother, the fine traffic commissioner. Delaney, thanks a lot for being here.
Alderman from the seventeenth.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to recognize as my honored guest, Bob Hilgeman. Bob is the committeeman of the Seventeenth Ward and chairman of the Democratic City Central Committee. Where's Bob at? There, there's Bob.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to honor as my special guest today, resident of the Twenty-Sixth Ward, and she's the honorable treasurer of the city of St. Louis, DeShaw Jones. Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have Anthony Scalia from the AGC as my honored guest this morning, and also Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant from AT&amp;T, and Dave Sweeney, all around interesting guy as my special guest. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Brooks Gedeker, Executive Director of SLU's Midtown Redevelopment Corporation, and Sally Roberts, Business and Pre-Law Senior at SLU, is working with us on our Midtown Development. Please stand. And I, I have to give recognition to two of my new sons. So State Representative Michael Butler and AGC Representative Anthony Lencia. He made the cut.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Alderman, twenty-second, yeah.
It comes after twenty-one. Yeah, but he called twenty-two. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Happy to be here this morning. I'd like to have a special guest, Mr. Wiley Price, and Ms. Connie Johnson, the Assistant Treasurer.
If the name Wiley Price sounds familiar to you, it should. That is the son of the Wiley Price, the photographer of St. Louis American, that's the son. Please stand one more time. Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. Like to recognize the local leader for the Morris Shines Temple of America. He is the grand sheik of Temple Number Five here in the city of St. Louis, located in the Great Fourth Ward, Brother Todd Ironzel, who's right at the top.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
President, members of the board, I would also like to have as my honored guest, Brooks Gedeker. He is a constituent and a neighbor, and I'm very proud of his new role at SLU.
Alderman from the eighteenth, thank you for your presence.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do remember who I am right now. I'd like to introduce as my, as my very special guest today, longtime resident of the Eighteenth Ward and committeeman for the Eighteenth Ward, Mr. Jesse Todd over here to my left.
Alderman, thank you for your, for your patience. I didn't know that you actually had an introduction back. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from twelfth.
President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest, Mr. Redman, friend of mine, and also Jerome Murray from the License and Collector's Office, and again, Greg Daly from the Collector of Revenue, who is my committeeman in the Twelfth Ward.
Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on December first. It was on this day in nineteen thirty-three that one of my favorite singers in the world, and the reason my wife liked me because we both liked Mr. Lou Rawls' barn. And on this day, December first, nineteen fifty-five, was the day that Rosa Parks decided that back the bus was no longer good for her. And most importantly, today is Bartender Appreciation Day. The one day of the year, the Alderman from the twenty-second actually leaves a tip at my place. Thank you.
Approval of minutes.
We have none.
Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda, and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
Dispense with line item nine, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line items ten through twelve. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill Two-O-three, sponsored by Aldermen and Alderwomen, Alderman Boyd, Spencer, Cohn, Williamson, Kotar, and Davis and Gunther, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the city establishing a multiple public works and improvement projects within the city of St. Louis. Board Bill Two-O-four, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Ten-Twenty Union and Fifty-Two-Fifty-One Kate. Board Bill Two-O-five, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Twenty-Four-Hundred through Twenty-Two North Sarah and Forty-Fifty-Six through Fifty-Eight St. Ferdinand. Board Bill Two-O-six, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Fifty-One-Twenty-Two through Twenty-Four Kensington. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill Two-O-three, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill Two-O-four, Two-O-five, and Two-O-six, that's the extent of reference to committees.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill One-Ninety-Five, sponsored by Alderman Kotar, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Twenty-O-one through Twenty-O-three, and Board Bill One-Ninety-Six, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and Alderman Kotar, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-One-Twenty-One Russell, Board Bill One-Ninety-Seven, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderwoman Martin, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Seventy-Five Hundred through Seventy-Five Eighteen South Broadway, Board Bill One-Ninety-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Fifty-Two Thirty-One through Fifty-Two Thirty-Three and Fifty-Two Thirty-Nine through Fifty-Two Forty-One Shaw. Board Bill One-Ninety-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-Six-O-One South Broadway. The following board bills were reported out of the Streets Committee, Board Bill One-Ninety, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance pertaining to the administration and use of the Parking Meter Fund and repealing subsection B-two of Section Two of Ordinance Seven-O-Six-One-One. Board Bill Two-O-two, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Streets to permanently close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Sullivan by blocking said traffic flow from Grand and containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill Twenty-Five, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map for properties on Magnolia from J Industrial to F Neighborhood District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Twenty-Six, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map for properties on Magnolia from J Industrial District to the C Multiple Family Dwelling District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-O-Five, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, and ordinance to change the zoning of property and for properties on Locust from J Industrial District to the H Area Commercial District and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Forty-One, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from J Industrial District to G Local Commercial and Office District only for properties on Shoto and from B-two Family Dwelling District to the G Local Commercial and Office District for properties on Shoto and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Thirty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor and the Comptroller to execute and deliver the Fifth Supplemental Trust and Denture, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions and approval and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof, superseding provisions of prior ordinances of the city to the extent inconsistent with the terms hereof and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two Hundred, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance dissolving the Special Allocation Fund for the Ederson Brothers Warehouse and Center for Emerging Technologies Redevelopment Project, terminating the designation of those portions of the city as a redevelopment area and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill Two-O-One, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance determining that the Tax Increment Financing Plan listed Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for completion of the projects therein, whereas the tax increment financing plans and projects listed in Exhibit A were approved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis by ordinance. That's the extent of our second reading.
With dispensable line items sixteen and seventeen, under board bills for perfection, Madam Clerk, please assign, please place Board Bill Ninety-Nine as amended on the perfection informal calendar.
So noted.
Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill One-O-One as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Green, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Thirty-One Seventy-Two Morgan Ford.
Alderwoman from the fifteenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill One-O-One as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Board Bill One-O-One as amended is a ten-year.
You'd like, you have to make a motion before you can.
Sorry, I would like to make a motion to approve Board Bill One-O-One as amended.
For the perfection.
For the perfection calendar.
You want to restate it one more time?
I would like, I would like to perfect Board One-O-One as amended.
All right, it's been moved by Alderwoman from the fifteenth, second by Alderwoman from the twenty-fifth. Now, please proceed with discussion.
Thank you. Board Bill One-O-One as amended, passed out of the HUD's Committee after some changes. It is now a ten-year tax abatement at ninety percent with no CBA and is, is a mixed-use development, first-floor retail, twenty-six market-rate apartments.
All right, any further discussion on the perfection of Board Bill One-O-One as amended? Any further discussion? Any further discussion on Board Bill One-O-One as amended? Alderman from the seventeenth.
Yes, Mr. President, I had a couple of comments I'd like to make about this. We've been working on incentive reform down here for a while, and I have spent a great deal of time about it. It's been a contentious issue, and the Alderwoman from the fifteenth has been very, very outspoken on it, and I, we have been trying to quantify things and get a better understanding of where we are. One of the things that we've come up with, which I thought was kind of interesting, is, is that the fifteenth ward, we went back and checked all the building permits, and the fifteenth ward had, oh, about thirteen million, I think it was, projects that had come through the last couple of years, which represented about one percent of all the building permit activity in the city. So, and in that time, the Alderwoman passed, I think it was twenty-two or twenty-three board bills, of which eighteen of them were tax abatement bills. In other words, about ninety, excuse me, about eighty, eighty-five percent of her legislation down here has dealt with in granting tax abatement. And as a result of that, I was just kind of curious, we had this committee hearing, and we, some of this stuff was brought up, and I had a little confusion about some of the other, but I thought we probed this, and it was a long meeting, many people asked about it, and, and I still had some questions, and I was wondering if perhaps the Alderwoman from the fifteenth would be kind enough to yield.
Alderwoman from the fifteenth will yield the question to Alderman from the seventeenth.
No, I will not.
Okay. Alderman from the seventeenth, Alderwoman from the fifteenth has refused to yield for questioning.
Wow, that never happened to me down here. Well, let me begin by, by asking you some of the, I'll ask your questions, and maybe I can help answer them for them because I'm not sure how accurate we would have gotten answers. So I received, and I think some of you may have, received an email from one of her constituents saying that, alleging that the Alderwoman from the fifteenth wasn't completely honest with us when she was before our committee. Um, and, um, I sent her an email and I asked her about it and I never heard back from her, so I guess the, the, uh, stonewalling started then, and so that's kind of why I was down here, wanting to get clarification on that. One of the things that's kind of interesting, I, uh, we live in an unusual time. Uh, I come home in the evening after I go to work, and I turn on the TV and I'm, I get my news from CNN, and I've never kind of lived in such a crazy environment. I don't know if anybody here watches CNN like I do. Um, but on there, we have a president that's kind of been known to take a little liberty with some facts, and they have this advertisement, I don't know if you've seen it, they have an apple on CNN, and, and the announcer comes on and he says, "This is an apple." Some people may call it an orange, but it's still an apple. And, uh, I think that's kind of a poke at our president and his kind of.
Alderman from the 12th, you have?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President. Point of order, can we stay on the subject instead of drifting off to CNN, which has nothing to do with St. Louis City?
No, I, I think the, the Alderman from the 17th, he's, he's drawing an analogy, uh, to talk about, uh, facts being blurred. Okay. Uh, uh, he's talking about the testimony of Alderwoman from the 15th in committee. Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. I, I was just trying to draw that analogy because there are some kind of factual things that, that came up that really caused me to pause when I received that email, and so I went back and began doing some research on, on this board bill and, and the testimony. And this is, uh, the first thing was the whole scheduling of the testimony. Anybody who wants to go back, it's a fascinating thing and, and, uh, to watch this, but one of the things that came up was on the first of the two HUDs meeting on this bill, uh, the sponsor alleged both in the meeting and in, uh, and in publications that the president was playing games on the assignment of the bill, and during the second meeting, after considerable discussion, the president finally produced an email demonstrating that he had actually assigned the bill to the proper committee. And if anybody wants to kind of follow along, I, I got some exhibits for you, uh, sitting out on your, uh, chairs. So that is kind of the first thing that was kind of interesting. Then what happened was, in this email that was sent from one of the constituents of the Alderwoman from the 15th, and I forwarded that all to everybody in the board, does everybody remember getting that from me? Anybody doesn't, you know, we'll go ahead and reforward it to you. But it said in that email that the association that assigned, uh, this community benefit agreement hadn't decided on whether or not they're going to void the agreement. And I thought that was really interesting. Now, I could go ahead and tell you what the Alderwoman from the 15th said during the committee hearing, but we live in a time when Access Hollywood tapes are being challenged as far as their authenticity, so I thought I, you know, I can't go ahead and relive the moment, but I went ahead and I recorded the comments of the Alderwoman from the 15th from the YouTube video.
We spent a considerable amount of time on board bill 101, uh, last time, went back to, um, the community, like I said I would do, and had conversations with the folks who negotiated the CBA, um, had conversations with people who voted on our CBA. Um, and the place that we got to, um, is understanding, you know, kind of the confines of, you know, what we're working within, um, is how can we, you know, how can I best represent the will or the intent of the folks who spent the time on the CBA without having a CBA? And so, um, so what we, um, have come up with is a, a couple of amendments here, an agreement to, um, to, uh, you know, not nullify or to not have the CBA. Um, the, you know, the community has, uh, agreed to sign, you know, a document that basically says that that, that contract is void, um, that will not go farther. Um, in the amendment here.
So I was just kind of amazed when I got that email saying that they're going to have a meeting to discuss it, and I sat in a committee hearing and heard that. So I thought that was all worked out when we voted on that, because we went ahead and called everybody down here to meet on that, because I, it was my understanding that everybody had agreed to knock it off. So that was kind of one of the things that I wanted to ask. I thought that was a little unusual, and then you kind of add that to the, the email issue. And then there's this whole issue about the amount of affordable housing that's, uh, that's out there. And, you know, on your desk is, see, what happened is, is we were having a hearing for new development in the 17th Ward, and, and some of, uh, the Alderwoman from the 15th's, uh, associates from her neighborhood showed up, and they were accusing us in the 17th Ward of, of not being sensitive to affordable housing issues. And, and I have laying out before you, uh, a little chart, looks like this, everybody, if you want to follow along, it's kind of interesting. They have all the affordable housing units by ward. I had to go ahead and, when somebody kind of starts spreading rumors, it takes a lot of effort to go ahead and dispel those, but we, we went ahead and we had CDA collect all the information of the, uh, units that were built, and, uh, you can see there, I ranked them, the 17th Ward is ranked number seven in the city. Uh, we have 930 units, and believe it or not, we got 50 more that we're getting ready to put up, and there's actually some additional units that weren't in this count. But we scroll down and all the way almost at the bottom, ranked number 22 is the 15th Ward with 62 units. And, um, I, you know, I guess the Alderwoman from the 15th, perhaps, you know, I know I'm this cold fish who kind of likes numbers and it, not very warm and fuzzy, but, uh, yeah, I actually kind of have a pretty good history with affordable housing. I remember most of the projects in my ward that I've, were been involved in. I've done, oh, somewhere in the range of 300 to 400 units of affordable housing in the ward, probably more than one a month for the almost 30 years that I've been down here. And in that time, there's, some of them are very, very contentious. There was the 40 units, for those of you who are familiar with the Bretco Building at Euclid and Forest Park, there's actually 40 units of affordable housing in that. There's another 32 units in, um, in the 6 North property, and there's, uh, uh, well, we did the Hamden Hall, which had 40 units, there's the McCormick House with 80 units, there's 100 and some odd. And so I remember all those things, and I'm thinking to myself, gosh, if I can remember all those projects that did affordable housing, this is what I was going to ask the Alderwoman from the, from the 15th, because here's what she said, here's what the Alderwoman from the 15th said during questioning by the Alderman from the 7th during our HUDs committee hearing.
You've lost like 300 rental units.
Can you hold it a little closer?
Yeah. Hasn't been predominantly converted to single families. How many of those have been tax abated?
Um, not a ton. Uh, I mean, I saw that somebody, you know, uh, you know, did this, this list of some abatements that I have granted over the years. Um, I will say probably at least half of these abatements that I've sponsored have been for the Community Development Corporation, uh, for affordable housing, um, in our ward. And, um, when I first got into office, I did grant, um, some, you know, single family abatement.
Here, well, let me, the, the reason I was going to ask her was, everybody, if you pull out this sheet on these sets of sheets here that are, are on everybody's, that is a list of all of the board bills that Alderwoman Green sponsored since she's been down here. And if you go through them, I kind of circled the ones that weren't kind of tax abated-oriented, and the rest of them, so out of the 23 board bills, I count five that did not deal with tax abatement. So let's see, 23 minus 5 is 18, and I think everybody heard that, didn't you? Half of them, half of these tax abatement bills, at least half of them, are for projects that have affordable housing. Now, I, I thought that was really interesting when I heard that, because there's only 62 units in the ward, and, and Alderwoman Green, in her brief time down here, made such a contribution, I went ahead, and this is not on your desk, but I was going to ask her to pick out which of the board bills on here granted tax abatement to affordable housing, because I was curious. I can kind of remember the ones that I did back in the day, and I'm old and I can't, you know, I was going to ask her which of these board bills that granted tax abatement impacted affordable housing, because at least nine of them were supposed to. Well, what's not on your desk is an email that I sent to Alana Green, who compiled that list for us, our, our Director of CDA. And this is what she sent me afterwards. Per our housing staff, there has only been one unit of affordable housing created in the 15th Ward since Alderman Green was elected. Anyone want to guess which one that is? It's out of the 18, it was for 3722 Thelozen. So that's the one on here, that's, that represents half of the tax abatement that she's granted. So, um, and if anybody wants to see that afterwards, because it's not, you know, we don't want to play Access Hollywood here and dummy up facts and information, we don't want to have facts confuse us, she went on to say, later, this is me asking her a question.
Is of the $13 million of building permits that were issued last year, how many of those were projects that you said no to?
A lot. Um, I don't have those numbers, but SLDC definitely would.
So I started thinking about that, you know, I, I've been very fortunate, I got a very busy ward, and when I say no to a project, it tends to kind of ring out a memory, you know, kind of, you kind of remember that, because it kind of, you know, you're trying to do something. And I wanted to go ahead and I want to demonstrate, I'm an old guy and I'm not young like the Alderwoman from the 15th, so my memory's not that good, but I actually remembered a number of these projects. This first sheet here is from June of 20, I, that's a 617, that was from June of 614. And if anybody wants to go out, it's a website, now these are ones that I can kind of document, it's called Urban STL, and it's a blog and they talk about stuff, and I was absolutely getting crucified out there, because I told these people that I wouldn't grant them tax abatement so that they could tear down a functioning building, uh, the Optimist Building over on Lindell. It was a mid-century modern building, and this particular building didn't have first-floor retail or some, some other things, it's a great building, would love to see it built in the city, but that, that, I, I had people on there saying that they didn't pay me enough in kickbacks to get this done, you know, and, oh my gosh, I don't know if any of you have ever stopped the $50 million project before because you didn't grant them tax abatement, but you tend to make a lot of people mad about that. Let me go ahead and go to the next one then. This is, uh, the next one's one that I remember saying no to. Uh, this one is the largest project that I've said no to yet, and we used to do these things, I had a committee out in my neighborhood, made up of neighborhood residents that would vet these, and the first and the biggest one, uh, not the first one, but the largest project that we've ever said no to, I remember quite well, and I'm pretty, I'm pretty proud of saying no to this, this property was at 3853 Forest Park, and we were trying to test the market and see if something would get built without tax abatement, and this particular project was a, didn't have first-floor retail, the construction materials weren't very good, it wasn't going to be a project that would be, have enduring quality, you know, if you're going to grant 10-year tax abatement, you hope that the building will be valuable 150 years from now. Well, if you look at that building, and I, this is right out from, this is in Access Hollywood here, this is right off of the City of St. Louis website, the GO website. If you go through there, you can see that in 2017, that property paid $39,000 in taxes, and the following year, 2016, it paid over $750,000 in taxes. And, and boy, oh boy, that guy wasn't very happy with me, but we did that, and you kind of remember when you do something like that. The next one is, uh, about the second largest one, and incidentally, when we're doing these things, we typically do them, you know, so you can see there, that happened, that change happened in 2015, which means that we were actually starting to say no probably two to three years before that, so that would have been 2013 or 2014, long before the, you know, Alderwoman from the 15th got interested in this issue. The, uh, next page is another fairly good-sized project, that is the Piazza, it's over near Vanaventer and, uh, Vanaventer and West Pine, and you can see there, between 2016 and 2017, over $100,000 increase in taxes, that was at 3937 West Pine. Then you go ahead, and I stuck this next one in here, oh, that's Le Cleed, oh, I guess the one that I, I lost the other one there. There was one in there that, uh, that particularly reminds me, because, uh, the, the, the developer, when we said no to him, kind of took it personal, and it turns out that he and the Alderwoman from the 15th have a mutual friend, and, and that friend's name is Joe Geekemper. And, and they, that developer was so mad at me that he ended up providing Joe Geekemper about $10,000 of the $20,000 he raised when he ran against me. But, um, that kind of.
Alderwoman, please state your point of order.
I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to be talking about campaign fundraising on the floor of the board.
Okay, I, I will, I won't bring up campaign fundraising anymore, okay. So those are some of the projects, and so I was kind of amazed that when the Alderwoman from the 15th said that she did a whole lot of them, now, we haven't done a lot of them, there's another half dozen or so in the ward that, that we've turned down. When we stood, when I became chairman of the HUDs Committee and we started working on this financial model that we had, uh, we ended up, uh, taking that decision away from the ward, doing things differently than perhaps I would have done them myself, and we're trying to go ahead and show some sense of cooperation, and, and we're trying to instill confidence in the system by, by using SLDC's financial analysts that they've hired over there to decide how much and when we should be using these things. Now, all of this stuff would be kind of minor, but to get back to the apple analogy, you know, sometimes facts matter and what we say as elected officials matter. We're down here and we're dealing with things that we're trying to instill confidence in the public. Some of these things are controversial, things like tax abatement and TIFs, and getting really good information out to people is important. It's fine for us to come down here and disagree, but if we disagree, it would be nice if we could go ahead and keep things, you know, relevant and, and factual. And, and I would probably just go ahead and say, all that committee hearing was, you know, there was probably some misstatements, or maybe some things were said under pressure that perhaps she really didn't mean. But then, I think about it, and this has been going on since she's arrived down here. Uh, I, I'm reading, so we have a stadium thing, we got a big controversial thing, we're trying to instill confidence in the system, and, and instead of saying, oh, people might disagree with me on the stadium or just disagree with me about TIF abate, uh, tax abatement, this is what the Alderwoman from the 15th had to say after a committee hearing down here. "The deal-cutting, bribery, and corruption at City Hall will never cease to amaze me." In exchanges with other aldermen, Green of the 15th Ward went further. "I have loved ones offered bribes for my support. I'm not alone. Campaign finance reports will be interesting." Alderman President, Aldermatic President Louis Reed responded, "Providing the name of the relative who engaged in bribery would go a long way to help the FBI look into your allegations." The St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department said it contacted Green after seeing her tweets. Department said it found nothing actionable and referred her to the FBI. U.S. Attorney Richard Callahan said Friday that he had received a complaint from Green, but cautioned, "In my 24 years of experience as a prosecutor in Jefferson City, when allegations go through the media, it tends to be more political than criminal." Folks, we deal with a lot of stuff down here, we're going to disagree about a whole bunch of things, but the, but to lie about essential facts, call people criminals, you disagree with them about affordable housing and you act like they're, they have no interest or passion about that issue, or that they're unconcerned, and then to go ahead and show up at a meeting and just tell people blatant lies, I mean, 18 board bills, half of them are supposed to be affordable housing. We go ahead and we do a fact check, and it turns out that only one of them is. We go ahead and we do a fact check and it turns out that only one of them is. Unbelievable. Anyway, I am rising to actually, believe it or not, support this bill. Not because of the sponsor. I think she's an embarrassment to the, her constituents in the 15th ward, but because we're trying to create a process down here that requires integrity and I am going ahead and support this because actually it went through the SLDC. And despite the Alderman's objections to projects in other people's wards, I think this would be good for the city. This is just, she's finally, she arrived at the conclusion that this project needed tax abatement. I have on everyone's desk, there's a, a list of vacant buildings. 17th Ward has four times the number of vacant buildings as the 15th Ward does. Last I checked, the 15th Ward doesn't have anything like the Riverfront Hotel that sits beneath the arch that is vacant. Trying, it's a vacant hotel in the prime spot in the whole city and we can't get it fixed. We have a 42-story office building that's in downtown that at some point it would be nice to have filled up with people paying earnings tax and payroll tax and such. And it's really tough to get people to invest in St. Louis in this environment. I have projects in my ward that are, one vacant building may take up 12 acres of contaminated property. I have two acre lots across from the largest urban park in the country and they've been vacant for 40 or 50 years. If it's easy, why doesn't somebody just build on them? A lot of this is a result of just change that's happened in our city and now some of it's starting to get better. And we want to go ahead and grandstand and say everybody else is a crook, everybody else abuses tax abatement, anybody who's for the stadium is corrupt, anybody who doesn't vote for my bill hates poor people. It, you know, it destroys the credibility, the whole thing. Let's argue about the facts. Let's get some information before us, agree that the, the information's valid and that they come from a reliable source and then let's go ahead and discuss that. But to make these outlandish accusations reminds me too much of what life is like in Washington DC now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I talked about at the end of our committee meeting, the fact that some things need to change at the Board of Aldermen. We have a lot of responsibility before us and it requires the ability for us to coexist, to have debate, but to make sure that we come with any results that benefit the quality of life of the citizens of the City of St. Louis. The time and energy that we have spent, most especially the last two years, on unnecessary battles that had no good results in the end is embarrassing. I try to stay in my corner and stay out of it. Anybody that knows me, most of them say I stay on my private island and I work for my community. End of story. But when you come on my private island and you want to deal and hurt my residents and give them undue duress, then you got a problem. And so that is what has happened. And when you have to take time away from serving your community to deal with unnecessary things, did you see all this paper on, this is money at the end of the day. This is money that I could be putting towards something else on behalf of the citizens. And then I look at, you know, we're so busy trying to justify all these different accusations that are going back and forth. You know, you know me, I'm eagle-eyed, I read everything and I find all mistakes. So I was looking at this one memo here that the Alderman had tried to verify, to stick it to someone about when something was introduced for committee, assigned to a committee. And even though this memo says September 22nd, we all know if we go back to the record, that it's September 15th, which means that it was done in a timely manner. And so all of that information that was out there about someone was trying to keep the bill from going to a committee is not true. But that's not the point. The point is, work needs to be done on behalf of the citizens, not on behalf of personal agendas to move forward. That is not what we're here for. I'm going to vote for this bill because it's a darn good project. It's going to look good on Magnolia. I visit that street all the time. I go to the tea store, I go to the vintage resale shop there, I go to the two bars over there because they serve good drinks. When they open up the barbecue restaurant, I used to go over there to help them, they didn't make it, but I used to go over there to help them. So I spend my money all over the city. I don't have that much to spend, but I spend it all over the city with small business. So at the end of the day, don't act like we all don't care. We do. We care about this entire city. So what we've got to do is change the way we do business. And if you can't get with it, leave it and go do something else. Because we can't stay in this place where we're at now. We can't stay here. Now, I've dealt with the situation, you know, I, I know what Joe was talking about. And you, and you have leadership in this. And if you think that no one that lives in your ward doesn't know us, think again. Remember, I used to organize the entire city. I had a contract to organize the entire city. And I served on the school board and the housing authority board and the trustee pension board where all the teachers' pension was and did a darn good job and made it good for them. So let's do business on behalf of the citizens and stop all this bickering and unnecessary confusion. Just, just stop it. But know that the only reason I'm voting for this bill today is because it's a good project. I can't give you the respect that you're due today and I would love to do that. Because if you talk to people, I spend my life supporting young people so they can move up the ladder. Because I don't need to move up, I've done everything I wanted to do already. So I want to see more young people move up. So try to figure it out, try to figure it out. Because you will not make it on the path that you are on. You just will not make it. I don't care who supports you with any kind of media or whatever, you won't make it in the end because people figure it out after a while and they get tired of playing the hard game. So I want this bill to move forward. I want to see this project built. I want to see people benefit from it. I want to look at it looking good on Magnolia. But I mean, I mean Morgan Ford, I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about another project in somebody else's ward that I've been looking at because I look at everybody's projects. So know that it doesn't have to be this difficult. Know, just know that. Please, please try to understand, it does not have to be this difficult. And everybody here works hard, extremely hard. I volunteered in this city for 20 straight years. Nobody was paying me anything. I didn't ask anybody to pay me anything because I didn't need it. But I worked hard to make sure that people had information, that good programming came to our communities, and that we had people educated so that they could have some good self-help. That's another thing too. Don't put bad information out there to your community. They need good information, they need to be educated. Because when we're gone, they need to take care of themselves, be able to take care of themselves well. I thank you for the privilege because I know I got a little bit off of the bill, but I just had to say that because it's been on my heart and I'm tired. I'm tired, I don't think you know how tired I am of this. Because I know how much further ahead we could have been without all this nonsense. And anybody who's continuing to support it outside of this Board of Aldermen needs to stop too because you will be in it as well.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th?
I'd like to say that this project does not contain any affordable units in it. Is that correct? There will be no subsidized units in it? Sadly, I, I find that a little bit disturbing because of the number of units that I have for affordable housing in my ward and, and it seems that maybe the 15th is becoming further gentrified. But, you know, with that said, I think that, you know, as Michelle Obama said, when you, when they go low, you go high. I will support this against my better judgment, but in the future, you know, I think that we need to look making housing affordable for all people in the City of St. Louis. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 25th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that, you know, I can appreciate some of my colleagues and their frustrations around the process pertaining to this particular board bill. You know, I can share some of their frustrations, but also, you know, at the end of the day, there's an end user, you know, and, and project. And I've, I've heard, I think, pretty consistently from folks that, you know, they want to support the project, that it, you know, it certainly is an area, if you've been to Morgan Ford, yes, it's, it's coming back. The last 10 years have been rejuvenation on Morgan Ford. You know, but the southern stretch of Morgan Ford still certainly has its, its issues and concerns. So, you know, it's not as though this isn't a worthy project. Could it be better? Absolutely. And I think, you know, people on all sides of this conversation would say that. But there is someone who, I mean, this isn't a large developer, this is a, you know, an individual developer who's mostly done two and four family conversions. This is really the first time that they're doing a large-scale development project. There's a lot of small investors that, you know, have their livelihoods on the line when it comes to this project. And, you know, I mean, you can laugh as you want, Matthew, but, you know, I mean, the reality is, is that when people are putting money into the city, you know, we should recognize that. And, you know, certainly, you know, I represent an area that is almost entirely low mod income. And, you know, I, I look at these stats and it's really, you know, I'm not sure what the Alderman from the 17th Ward was trying to prove with this. You know, it says that I have 69 affordable housing units in my ward. My entire ward is affordable housing. You know, the average single-bedroom apartment in my ward rents for less than $500 a month on average. You know, so to, to say that I only have 69 affordable housing units, and frankly, I don't even think that that's accurate because I have an entire development project that was done behind St. Mary's High School using low-income tax credits to be able to, to do the development. And that's almost 100 units over there. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure where those numbers came from, I'm not sure how accurate they are. But, you know, I represent a ward that pretty much the entire housing stock is affordable housing. So it could be more quality affordable housing for sure, especially when landlords aren't improving their property. But, you know, I just, I, I have to take exception with some of the things that have been stated down here. But I also want to, you know, recognize that there are folks in the neighborhood that want to see this, you know, project happen and that there are people who are trying to make this happen. And I, I think that, you know, I can appreciate the concerns of a lot of the folks that, you know, have expressed them, even neighborhood residents and their concerns around parking and whatnot. These are things that, you know, we need to work through and be conscientious of. But, you know, I'm rising in support of the bill. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 17th?
Mr. President, I just wanted to respond to a comment of the Alderman from the 25th. And what he raises is actually an incredibly valued point and I actually agree with him even though I, he, he stated it in a way that he thought that we disagreed. The, the first thing is, as far as the numbers on these sheets that I passed out, those are numbers that were compiled for the HUDs Committee in our, in the beginning of our analysis of affordable housing in the city. We are far from being done with the entire analysis, but this, these numbers are a consolidation of publicly supported affordable housing, which combined Lytech programs, the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the public housing, you know, the St. Louis Housing Authority. So they've gone out, they've collected information from those various sources, compiled them so that we would have it in one place so that we go ahead and start making informed decisions about it. Now, the, the comment where the Alderman from the 25th said that there's lots of affordable housing in his ward, I agree with him. But it's become affordable in a way that, that is challenging for all of us. It's, it's people leaving and it becomes affordable in the way, in a sense that the cost of the rents don't provide enough money to take care of the property or the cost of building a new project is below the, what it could be, the cost of building a new project is above what it could be sold for. And that, that is all widespread throughout the city. And our biggest challenge is trying to rectify those kind of two conflicting challenges. You want to go ahead and keep housing affordable, the problem you have is, is that quality housing is expensive. And what ends up happening is, is, is that, you know, we can't get people to go ahead and invest and do market rate development in, in the City of St. Louis without subsidizing in some ways. Now, we're just starting to see some parts of the city be able to develop without some sort of subsidy. I mean, part, parts of my ward are, have gotten to that point. I ran through a couple examples of not, not great projects, not projects that are pushing the envelope, not projects that, that are competing with the suburbs for, for office tenants, not projects that are competing with the suburbs for retailing, not projects that are competing with Clayton for high-rise development. But there are some projects, you know, in, in parts of the 17th Ward, I think parts of the 28th Ward and certainly the southwest quadrant has always been very solid. But there are vast stretches of the city where we cannot build something new and sell it for what it costs to build. And as a result of that, we need to go ahead and augment that. And it's a tricky, tricky thing. Morgan Ford is looking great. I, I drove down there while all this was going on and I, I'm kind of parochial, I stick in my own part of town pretty much, but I did drive down there to look at the site. I was curious. It's, it's, you know, it's a neat little strip. But we also have in, in the center of the West End, our most, you know, strongest market in the city, we have two acre parcels, now one of them's going to get built on finally that have been vacant for 40 years across the street from the largest urban park, you know, one of the largest urban parks in the country. And, you know, I, I'm going to fess up. 25 years ago, I could have put a Walmart, not a Walmart, I could have put a Kmart, not a Kmart, a Walgreens. I could have put a Walgreens in there with the surface parking lot around it, but I just thought the City of St. Louis might deserve something a little bit better than a Walmart with the surface parking lot across from the Chase Hotel. And I thought, well, maybe if I waited some time, and I never thought it'd be 25 years, that we might actually get some noteworthy architecture over there and something that would, would really be inspirational and kind of push the bar a little bit. And that's what I did. But that's the questions and the types of things that we have to consider neighborhood by neighborhood, block by block and so forth. And it's a tough thing and trying to go ahead and create citywide rules for all these different situations is very, is very, very difficult. Some people think we should, you know, use everything on affordable housing. Some people think it ought to be spent on economic development. Some people think it ought to be spent on retailing. I, there's just, there's 28 Aldermen down here. We've got 29 different views about what we should doing on it. And we're coming down here and we finally find a guy like this who's willing to invest on Morgan Ford and take a risk. And, you know, the Alderman from the 15th yanked him around for a year. They come down here and after she bashed everybody else's projects around the city, she asked us to support him. I'm supporting him not because of her, but because I think it's a good thing for the city. And I agree with the Alderman from the 14th. I'm not going low, I'm going to go high. So I'm voting for this. And I actually encourage those of you who've come up and asked me whether or not you should vote for it, I would actually encourage you to support it if you think it's a good project for the city.
Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Mr. I have to move the former Alderman from the 8th microphone up. Yes, that's my farewell to you, Steve, you short little monster, you. There goes my assessment, all right. I stand here, folks, I rise in support of this bill because as you know, Morgan Ford is the borderline between the 10th and the 15th. In 2003, when I came down here, this was a ghost town. We had a Family Dollar that was robbed twice daily for a few weeks. We had a, the, the side of this, this development was a car wash where drug deals were going down constantly. We had one stable business, which was Grow Furnishings, which has stayed on there. And in the long term... And in the long term, we have done very good things on there, and I think this will be a good thing for the city, a good thing for the 15th Ward, the Morgan Ford area, and the 10th Ward. So, please, with all feelings aside, and let's vote aye for this bill. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 25th.
I, I just want to make a note that the Alderwoman from the 6th Ward still uses that microphone, so it might need to be adjusted downward. But, all humor aside, you know, I, I also do want to point out that, you know, I agree, you know, that we could do a better job with, you know, community benefit agreements. And I think that that's a discussion that, you know, is ongoing down here, how those are structured and how we can make them work for the betterment of our communities. And I know that's also a point of, you know, contention with this bill as well. You know, my own personal preference is that we wouldn't have third-party community benefit agreements, that if we actually do a community benefit agreement, that it's the city that's, you know, administering that. But also, you know, we have gone through a process on incentive reform that outlines, you know, percentages that should be available for abatement and whatnot to developers and property owners. And so, you know, I think that we're in a period of flux, and there's a lot of discussions and a lot of change that's happening. And as change happens, you know, there are certain things that are, you know, going to confuse people and/or, you know, upset people. And so, you know, we're still working through a lot of that change down here, but I think we're moving in a good direction. And so, I just want to say, you know, echo some of the other sentiments that, you know, this really, you know, is a good project for, for the city and for the region and our neighborhood. And so, you know, I hope that we can put some differences aside with regard to the movement that we're moving in regards to change and, you know, support the project. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you. I renew my motion.
All right. Alderman from 15th, before we move forward, I know you passed out this email where you were saying that the Board Bill 101 was moved from Neighborhood Development Committee to HUDs. I just want to make note that the bill was never, well, that's what, that was the request in your email. The Board Bill was never assigned to Neighborhood Development, ever, and it was assigned on time to HUDs Committee. Our first meeting back, we adjourned early, there was an email sent out, and the Board Bill was assigned. So, so I just want to be clear about that. The delay was a delay that you brought on yourself. And we're moving forward. Alderman, Alderman, favor, is there a request for roll call? There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
No.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. 24, aye votes, 2 no votes.
By a vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 15th, and perfected Board Bill Number 101 as amended.
That's the extent of Board Bills for our perfection.
Alderman from the 25th.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules to move Board Bill 101 to third reading calendar.
The Board Bill 101 as amended.
As amended, yes.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 25th and seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 101 as amended to the third reading calendar. Any discussion? Alderman from 17.
Yes, Mr. President, I was wondering if perhaps the Alderwoman from the 15th might yield for questions. I promise I won't be too mean to her.
Alderman from the 15th, will you yield for questions? And Alderman from the 17th.
No.
I don't see how you guys would suspend the rules for, if she won't even ask you a question, but, but that's all up to you. She said no.
Okay. Well, then, I am obligated to speak against this. The question I was going to ask her is, what is the urgency of passing this, given that we were communicated, we received an email saying that there was a neighborhood meeting on December the 13th to void the community benefit agreement? And our ordinance that we're voting on says that it is invalid until December the 13th. Now, the reason I'm a little, if I'm a little fussy about this, I want everybody to understand, see, the Alderwoman from the 15th went to the newspapers and told the newspapers that I was being mean to her and I was holding up her board bill and wouldn't give it a hearing, and that it was absolutely urgent that we get this thing done. And so, I went ahead and I changed everything around, scheduled a hearing for her, and then we went ahead and scheduled another hearing for her and brought everybody down just to hear her board bill, with the understanding that, that the community agreed to it, because that's what she heard. That's what I played for you earlier, was her saying that the community agreed to that. And then we got this email on 12/13. And so, I guess the question I was asking is, wanted to ask was, what is the urgency for us to suspend the rules if the reason, you know, the, the ordinance can't even go into effect unless the community benefit agreement is voided and the developer can't get any financing or anything else, you know, unless that's voided anyway? So, there's no urgency on this at this point. So, I, I'm speaking against it if she, I can't even get a simple question answered.
All right. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 15th.
We'll go ahead and just respond to that. I don't believe, and I don't have it in front of me at the moment, but I don't think there's an emergency clause in this, so it won't go into effect for 30 days. We have, two of the parties have signed to nullify the CBA. We're waiting on the third party. The abatement can't go into effect until that's been done, but this gives the developer the ability to start to move ahead and finish with demolition of the car wash that is there right now, because he cannot close on his loan until, until this passes the board.
Alderman from the 17th.
I believe that was almost an omission, that she agreed, that she didn't tell us the full truth in front of the committee, so I'll take that as a big win today. And I, with that, I will take that as a huge win, and I will withdraw my objection, and I now plan on voting to suspend the rules. It's amazing what the truth will do for it.
Any further, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the 25th, seconded by Alderman from the 6th, that we suspend the rules for purposes of moving Board Bill 101 as amended to the third reading calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
No.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. 21, aye votes, 4 no votes, 1 present.
By a vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 25th. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 101 as amended on the regular third reading calendar.
So noted. That's the extent of Board Bills for our perfection.
Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar. I mean, wait a minute.
No, no, no.
No, wait a minute. We don't need you yet. I jumped ahead. Third reading consent.
Board Bills 185, 142, 146, 170 as amended, 132 as, 132 committee substitute as amended, and 124 floor substitute.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Kotar. 26, aye votes.
By a vote, you sustain the motion of Alderman from the 18th, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading, report of engrossment.
Board Bill 101 as amended. Sponsored by Alderwoman Green and honors approving a redevelopment plan for 3172 Morgan Ford.
Alderman from the 15th, you recognize on third read, and final passage of Board Bill 101 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 101 as amended.
It's been moved, moved by Alderman from the 15th, seconded by Alderman from the 6th. Any discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and final pass Board Bill 101 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Kotar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Honowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
No.
Alderwoman Tyus. 25, aye votes, 1 no vote.
By a vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the 15th, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 101 as amended.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment, and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills 185, 142, 146, 170 as amended, 132 committee substitute as amended, 124 floor substitute, and 101 as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his Alderman from the 19th, we're going to try this again. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the courtesy resolution calendar. Lou, can you?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adopt a courtesy resolution consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
First reading of the resolution.
Resolution 173, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and President Reed. The Board of Aldermen shall recognize the Me Too Movement and review all city ordinances and regulations in relation to sexual harassment to identify and determine that all workers, whether intern, volunteer, or employee, receive the same protections.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 173.
Mr. President, could we have the resolution read?
Madam Clerk, please read Resolution 173.
If it's not available, I'll bypass that right now. I'll explain it. This resolution is to allow this Board of Aldermen, this legislative body, to examine what rules that we actually have in place. As we see what is going on in this country, it is more than has been reported in news. During the era, when I first came into the workforce, it was criminal what women had to accept. And I know that some of the complaints that have come across, and the people that you have identified as abusers, it was the norm, and they thought they were doing nothing wrong, and they thought they had the right to do it. But we need to make sure that our employees are protected appropriately, men and women, and I would like to have Resolution 173 assigned to the Rules Committee, please.
All right, it's been, been, all right, do you want to wait till Sergeant Arms bring her a copy of the resolution and have it read?
It won't hold us up too long.
All right. I think he's getting it right now. Do you have a copy of it? Do you have a copy of it?
Yes.
With you? Could you hand it?
Uh, let's see. I don't even have it in here. Give it to Diamond.
Resolution 173, Me Too, whereas the St. Louis Board of Aldermen recognizes and supports the Me Too movement and the attention it is drawing to renew equal rights for all, and whereas the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen supports the goals and ideals of the Me Too Awareness Campaign. The social media campaign has become a way for users to share their experience with sexual violence and stand in solidarity with other survivors. And whereas the Me Too movement spread virally as a two-word hashtag used on social media in October 2017 to denounce sexual assault and harassment in the wake of mech, in the wake of sexual misconduct allocations. And whereas the Me, the movement has encouraged others to share their stories of abuse and misconduct, the Board of Aldermen would like to amplify these voices and stories of abuse and work to find equal rights for all within the City of St. Louis, state and country. And whereas the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen recognized the Me Too movement and commit to support efforts to spread encouragement and awareness to victims of sexual assault and harassment. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we recognize the Me Too movement and review all city ordinances and regulations in relation to sexual harassment to identify and determine that all workers, whether intern, volunteer, or employee, receive the same protections. Introduced on this, the first day of December 2017 by Honorable Marlene E. Davis, Alderwoman nineteenth ward, Honorable Louis E. Reed, President, Board of Aldermen.
Uh, thank you. Alderwoman.
President, thank you for the reading. Uh, I did notice that we need to change one word, and we'll do that in committee, uh, where it says users, the word should be abused, abused. Okay? Uh, but I just want to give one more comment very quickly, because I know we do want to move on. We know that in order to be right, you must have a infrastructure that allows that. And so we want to make sure that we don't have any loopholes that you can slide through or anything like that. We want to be hard and firm on this. If I told you some of my stories, you would cry. But you know, I was trying to pave my way through school, I was trying to raise, so I was a young mom, my husband got killed when he came home from Vietnam, I had to work. Most times I had three jobs, and I, I had to take a lot of abuse. So at the end of the day, I want us to make sure that this is right for the City of St. Louis and those who interact with us in business. And, and, and we know we have enough laws on the books outside of that, but when it comes to the personnel matters here, we got to be right. And I thank you for the opportunity to say that.
Thank you, Alderwoman, and thank you for bringing forward that resolution. Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth?
Yes, Mister President and members of the board, add Me Too.
Madam Clerk, please note, make note of that, add Alderman to the fourth to, uh, that resolution.
And I would like to make a motion that we embank this bill.
It's been moved by Alderman from the fourth, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh. Um, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Uh, Resolution 173 is in bank. Any fur- any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the nineteenth, would you like to make the motion to send it to committee now?
Mister President, members of the board, I'd motion to move, move the, uh, Resolution number 173 to the Rules Committee.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 173 to Rules.
So noted. That's the extent of our first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
Following resolutions were reported out of the Housing Committee. Resolution 166, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis, Enterprise Zone for four, for 1641 Tower Grove LLC. Resolution 167, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Enterprise Zone for 5642 Natural Bridge LLC. Resolution 15, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Enterprise Zone for 21st Street Properties. That's the extent of our second reading of resolutions.
Announcements.
Uh, announce-
Yeah, Miss L.A., you have unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements?
Announcements, no meetings scheduled for next week other than Friday, December the eighth, full board meeting, ten AM in, ten AM in the chambers. That's the extent of our announcements.
Yeah, Ald- Alderman from the, Alderman, please.
Yes, we just went through the second reading of resolutions, there was no vote taken?
Uh, were, were these re, re, just reports? Is that, is that what you were saying, Madam Clerk?
Yes, they were reported out of committee.
But, but, uh, were they just reports or were those action items? Those are action items. Okay, uh, you guys had reported that the Development Committee, uh, Dale Ruthsats and those guys said that they were just reports. Uh, but if Dale is here, if, if they are actua- they're action items, okay, they're action items. Uh, we need to, Lou Golly, Lou, we need to talk about that after the meeting, you guys cannot miss something that big. Uh, Alderman, uh, so first, Resolution 166, Alderwoman Davis, you recognized on Resolution 166.
Uh, I move that, uh, Resolution number 166 is adopted.
It's moved by Alderman from the nineteenth, seconded by the, by Alderman from the tenth, that we adopt Resolution 166. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Resolution 167, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, Enterprise Zone for 5642 Natural Bridge LLC.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the second read in the Resolution 167.
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board, I move for adoption of Resolution 167.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second and seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution 15, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia, Enterprise Zone for 21st Street Properties.
Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on the second read is Resolution 15.
Thank you, Mister President, I move for adoption of Resolution 15.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the tenth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions, resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Spencer, line item 25, announcements.
We have no meetings other than the full board meeting on Friday at ten AM in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to, uh, let the members of the Legislative Committee know that we are going to have a legislative meeting this Thursday at ten o'clock.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
All right, Alderman from the tenth.
Thank you. Hello, thank you, Mister President, members of the board. Tomorrow, December second, is Christmas on the Hill. So if you're looking for something to do, it's going to be a sixty-degree day. Come see Santa Claus, take the Nativity Walk, ride a carriage ride, have a roasted chestnut or as soon as eats a sandwich, come down to the Hill. It starts at eleven and goes until seven, when there's a concert in St. Ambrose Church. And also, I'd like to congratulate the new Alderwoman from the second. Please enjoy this day, you'll never be more popular than you are right now. Thank you.
Yeah. Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
All right, thank you, Mister President. I just, uh, would like to make everyone aware that the, uh, young women from Naring's Hall are going to be out in the Rotunda today at twelve-thirty. Uh, they will be, uh, playing their chimes as they do every year in the Rotunda. Uh, it's a really wonderful, uh, musical event that we have here on the Rotunda every year. A special shout-out to Annie Gill, who's one of my, uh, friends who will be out there, uh, and, uh, niece, if you will. Uh, but anyways, it'll be a, a wonderful event, and I welcome you all to join us out in the Rotunda at twelve-thirty. Thank you.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the nineteenth.
Mister President, members of the board and to the public, the Salvation Army ringing of the bell with, for the kettle donations, let's make sure that all of us make it a purposeful donation to the Salvation Army, who serves people well. Uh, also, if you just want to have lunch in Grand Center, there's a lot of opportunities right there, Grand in Washington and at Strauss Park, because we have nice weather, we have places for you to sit, we, uh, lighted the Christmas tree there in the park. That's my own little opportunity there to have a little private thing like they do in New York, and, uh, everybody was there last night with hot chocolate and kids and Santa and all that. So what we want to do is make sure that we support those service providers that do very well on behalf of our citizens when they are in need. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mister President, members of the board. Tomorrow at ten AM at forty-one, forty-four, Dr. Martin Luther King at my satellite office, who will be cleaning up Martin Luther King and Paige, and I have a lot of brooms and shovels, so all you, my colleagues, come down and get a broom or shovel, a bag, and pick up some trash and help me keep the fourth ward clean.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Ten AM tomorrow, forty-one, forty-four, Dr. Martin Luther King.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mister President, members of the board, I move that the Alderman from the first be excused for necessary actions.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the fourth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mister President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, December eighth, ten AM.
It's been moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the tenth. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, stand adjourned.